Take these seats, please.
There's another one.
Look, just to make sure. Yes. Yes, I got Dr. Tim. Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to call today's meeting, June 30th, 2025, to order. Do I have any special intentions? Councilman LaHatt.
As everybody knows before the last meeting, my mother-in-law passed away unexpectedly that morning. Special prayers for her and the family. She, Mary Aunt Taffaro, she was a great woman, my wife's mom, of course. She won the Archdiocese Louis the Ninth Award for her 25 years of service in Bucktown to the St. Louis King of France district and parish, and was a great person, a great mother. Special blessings to her and my family during this time. And thank you all for the support. I got a lot of text messages and a lot of people showing up with food and flowers and people that show up at the funeral. So I just wanted to, you know, thank everyone on behalf of me in Virginia for reaching out to us during this difficult time. And every text and every call was appreciated and it helps. So, thank you all so much. I appreciate it.
Next, Dr. Tim Williams. Could you please lead us to prayer? Everyone, please rise.
Let's pray together. Father, we are grateful for our health, for the opportunities that you give us in life itself. And Father, we lift up our friend who had a loss in his family. We pray that you would continue to give them comfort in their time of loss. And we thank you for those who were able to support the family in difficult time. God, we pray for wisdom. You have appointed each of us tasked in this life and for those that have given the responsibility to manage our city, to lead, to give direction. I pray that you would give them wisdom. I pray that you would give them compassion. And I pray that in everything that they do, they would think not only of themselves, but of the people that they represent and serve. Father, thank you for this city and all the benefits that we have here. Father, we pray that we would have a spirit of unity in everything we do, that we would treat one another with great respect and love each other. And we pray for our city that you would watch over and protect us each and every day. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Councilman LaHatt, please lead us into pledge. Ma'am?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, you have a quorum. Councilwoman Dunn is absent. In accordance with Council Resolution Number B-14550, please be advised that our cellular telephones and other devices of this nature must be deactivated or silenced throughout the council meeting. Next, we have correspondence, reports from the mayor, C O, or department heads. Mayor Glazer?
All right, thank you. Council President decided to leave us, it looks like. Tuesday of this week, we went to Baton Rouge for a ceremonial check presentation from L D E Q, which is a loan number seven for wastewater improvements. The improvements would be to three sewer lift stations, 25th and Helena and 25th and Salem. Lift stations are on the canal banks now. They're going to be moved into a new submersible lift station installed in the streets. And a large one is the St. Jude Sewer Lift Station, which is on Loyola, in between, kind of behind the Walmart, in between Walmart and Ashner. It's pretty much to capacity now. And with the new 900 apartment complex coming online, we need to have a new, larger lift station. So that's what this $4 million loan is for, those three projects. And that's about it. Short and sweet.
Thank you, Mayor Glazer. Do we have any resolutions, motions, or other items from the floor? Seeing none, under the consent agenda, we have item one, approval of minutes, the regular council meeting of June 5th, 2025. I have a motion by Councilmember Wilmot, seconded by Councilmember Dunn. All councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes six zero. Under the public appearance agenda, we have item eight, public hearings and final passage. We have none. Item nine is ordinances for the sale, purchase, transfer, lease, and/or alienation of immovable property. We have none. Item 10 is opening of bids. We have none. Eleven is reclassification of zoning for final passage. We have none. Item 12 is other ordinances for final passage. We have none. Item 13 is resolutions and motions by council members. We have none. Item 14 is items removed from the consent agenda. We have none. Item 15 is acceptance of contracts and similar matters approved by the mayor. Item 15A is summary ordinance number 13,847, an ordinance approving an agreement with Digicom Systems Incorporated for maintenance and support for the Digicourt paperless court system and AMS Digicourt collection module in an amount not to exceed $34,100 for the clerk of court. I have a motion by Councilmember LaHatt, seconded by Councilmember Wilmot. Any discussion? Seeing none, councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes six zero. Item 15B is summary ordinance number 13,848, an ordinance authorizing the administration to utilize the existing Jefferson Parish contract number 55-21175 with Arco Company Services Incorporated to provide and install rental generators and various power equipment on an as-needed basis for the General Services Department. I have a motion by Councilmember McKenney, seconded by Councilmember Branigan. Councilman Wilmot?
Yes, if we can get an explanation on this one with the figures.
Councilman, at present time, we have two contracts with Arco. One is for generator maintenance and repairs, okay? And the other one is to purchase generators. However, we do not have a contract for rental and installation of generators in case we have a problem at our wastewater treatment plant or any one of our 84 sewer lift stations. So we needed a contract for rental and installation helping us with an installation of a rental generator. And by piggybacking to the Jefferson Parish contract, it allows to have that capability.
And what are the figures on this one?
We're following the Jefferson Parish contract. You know, it's on an as-needed basis. We may need it, we may not need it.
It's on the documentation that's attached to this legislation. Jefferson Parish has a $2 million cap, and they've already only used $469,000. Okay. And the reason why I ask is because usually on the header it says something. In this case, it did not. So that's the only reason.
It's just going to give us the capability to rent in case one fails and to install a rental while we repair the one that has failed.
Right, well needed, yeah. I understand, especially in storm season. So, thank you all. Thank you. Thank you for the explanation. That's all.
That's also, I know we have a bunch of portable generators that we have right now. This is to cover the ones that our generators aren't big enough to cover the stations.
These are primarily for the ones that are permanent on a number of our lift stations, including the wastewater treatment plant.
Okay, these probably larger generators compared to the smaller ones that we have now in the yard? Because I know we have a bunch of generators that we have.
We have over 20 portable generators. But we have other contracts, okay, for maintenance and repair. We have two contracts right now with Arco. One is for maintenance and repairs that we can utilize to repair our portable generators. The other contract is to purchase generators. This is for, in the event that we have a problem with one of our sewer lift stations that has a permanent generator or our wastewater treatment plant that has permanent generators, it would allow this company to get in there and fix the generator. And while the generator is being fixed, they can rent one. It gives that capability. It's a parish contract, all we're doing is piggybacking into that contract.
Got you. Thanks too much.
All councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes six zero. The clerk's going to make a clarification. The consent agenda will be motion by Councilmember Wilmot, seconded by Councilmember McKenney. I inadvertently said Dunn. My apologies. Item 15C is summary ordinance number 13,849, an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from Dicky's Steel LLC to purchase six stainless steel pipes and caps in accordance with electronic bid 25-3017 in an amount not to exceed $6,954 for the General Services Department. I have a motion by Councilmember Wilmot, seconded by Councilmember Brennan. Any discussion? Seeing none, all councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes six zero. Item 15D is summary ordinance number 13,850, an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from Restech for the purchase of 691 WatchGuard Off Point License Renewal in accordance with electronic bid 25-3019 in an amount not to exceed $8,139.98 for the Information Technology and Telecommunication Department. I have a motion by Councilmember Branigan, seconded by Councilmember Wilmot. Any discussion? Seeing none, all councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes six zero. Item 15E is summary ordinance number 13,851, an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from Dan Enterprises Team LLC to supply rope rescue equipment in accordance with electronic bid 25-2168 in an amount not to exceed $18,882.55 for the Kinnor Fire Department. I have a motion by Councilmember Sharwood, seconded by Councilmember Brennan. Any discussion? Seeing none, all councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes six zero. Item 15F is summary ordinance number 13,852, an ordinance authorizing a 12-month Policies and Training Solutions Management System subscription service from Lex Paul LLC in an amount not to exceed $47,664.83 for the Kinnor Fire Department. I have a motion by Councilmember McKenney, seconded by Councilmember Sharwood. Councilman Sharwood?
Chief, can you kind of elaborate on this, what we got and what we're expecting and what kind of training we want to receive?
It's not training we're receiving, it's management about training, all the training that we perform throughout the course of the year to track what our members have, which we have to do, as well as update all our policies and bring current and keep track of them. This is the initial fee for it. The fee goes down significantly after the first year with just the maintenance program on that. It's the same company that the police department uses for their policies also.
Chief?
No, he's right. It's something, it brings you more in line with what's going on across the country as far as your policies and practices go. So, you know, we found it beneficial. We're still in a transition stage, but, you know, it takes into consideration training deficiencies across the country and policies that might be instituted because of something that happened on the West Coast or East Coast, and it kind of keeps us consistent. It's driven by, ours is by the International Association of Chiefs of Police, which is, you know, a huge organization. And I'm sure the fire services has something similar to that.
Yeah, we have the International Association of Firefighters and Fire Chiefs, as well as all the different laws that apply to firefighters in the state of Louisiana that may not be applicable in other places. So they do have the lawyers from the state of Louisiana that helps monitor.
And you do have a contact that you work with to make sure you stay consistent within your department in anything that might be unique to your region.
And you think the price is fair?
Oh, yes, yeah.
Okay.
As he said, there's an initial cost because there's a lot of brainstorming, there's a lot of, you know, assembling policies and seeing how it interacts with what you might have, but there is a drop-off after that.
Oh, great. Thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, all councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes six zero. Item 15G is summary ordinance number 13,853, an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from NewCo Creations to purchase screen printed T-shirts in accordance with electronic bid 25-2171 in an amount not to exceed $6,412.10 for the Kinnor Fire Department. I have a motion by Councilmember Sharwood, seconded by Councilmember Wilmot. Any discussion?
Chief, where's?
Nikoyo, huh? There you go.
Chief, is this a local company or is this somebody like from Galls or?
No, I believe this is a local company. I didn't get the address on it when I looked at the bid tally sheet, so.
But I mean, it's not in out of state or out of country or anything like that?
No.
Okay, that's what I wanted. Thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, all councilmembers in favor, please say aye. Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes six zero. Item 15H is summary ordinance number 13,854, an ordinance approving an agreement with Lenfield Hunter and Junius Incorporated for professional architectural and engineering services for the Design, Construction, Administration, and supplementary services related to a new emergency operations center and training facility, Phase One, in an amount not to exceed $2,558,630.29 for the Kinnor Police Department. I have a motion by Councilmember LaHatt, seconded by Councilmember McKenney.
Chief, can you kind of?
Yes, I appreciate the opportunity. As we've discussed, you know, it's been a goal of the Kinnor Police Department. They have a training facility which would include an indoor range, a shoot house, an armory, auditorium, classrooms, kind of double as a training academy and emergency operations center on the north side of Kinnor. I have been active lobbying in Baton Rouge with our legislators, with the governor, and out of the Criminal Justice and First Responders Fund, we got our first allotment of $2.5 million for the purpose of doing the professional services part of it, the engineering, the architectural part of it. Once that work is done, then we'll be able to spec it out for the construction and see what the cost estimates would be and a plan to get more money from either the state or the federal government to complete this project. It is a long-term goal, but it is something that we're moving in the right direction. You know, it's good to strike now with the iron's hot in Baton Rouge, as well as our federal delegation. So, this is the first step in actually doing the design phase, the architectural phase, and get cost estimates so you know how much the project's going to cost. The firm was selected. There's been some talk about bidding this workout or doing it on a qualification basis. State and federal law mandate that you do it, or law and policy mandate you do it by qualifications. So we can't bid this workout, but, you know, we do have a qualified vendor, qualified on a local, city, state, and federal level to do this project. So we're very comfortable with the situation we're in.
This $2 million is just in design phase?
Right, engineer and design, doing the actual layout, you know, all the mechanical engineering and things of that nature.
Before we drive the first nail?
You got to have it, yes, sir. It's no different than any other public works project, other than this is being funded by the state. You know, the money's still up in Baton Rouge. There's so much oversight with these kind of contracts and these kind of projects for the F P C. Everything's going to be approved by the commission up in Baton Rouge, which is kind of tedious. There's more money that's waiting to come our way, but until we draw this money down, you can't get the other money. So, you know, I was told by somebody at a state level, if we get this in a shovel-ready position, there will be money for construction. So that's why I don't want to drag my feet on this.
Thank you, sir.
Councilman Branigan?
Chief, I understand that this money is all from the state and nothing out of, there's no Kinnor money in this legislation?
No, now, there might be a match down the road that we'll have to talk about, but right now, this is all state money. And I do plan to get some federal funds as well. So hopefully this thing will be financed, you know, through the federal and through the state, because, you know, we do pay taxes to those entities as well, so.
Okay, I just think that the general public needs to know that.
No, absolutely.
Thank you.
Councilman Brennan?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Chief, just want, thanks for the explanation. Thanks for the email the other day. That was very helpful to receive and to have that information. Thanks for all your work and what you've been doing for the safety of not only the men and women of the police department, but the city as well. Thank you.
Thank you for your support.
Yes, sir, you're welcome.
Councilman Wilmot?
Yeah, I'd just like to ditto what Councilman Brennan said. And also add that you've done an outstanding job at getting and going after dollars that we need here so desperately in Kinnor. And to have a range here and a training center facility here in Kinnor is outstanding. Naturally, we don't have, for those aspects, we don't train here. Or if we do, it's minimal. We have to go to other ranges and so forth and qualify for shooting and whatnot. I presume it's Gonzales, is it?
St. James is the one we go to the most, and that's an hour drive each way. So, yeah, that is kind of prohibitive.
And if we have it all here, and I mean, as far as Kinnor's concerned, we're the seventh largest city in the state. We should have something like that here. Hats off to you for going after the dollars and then making it happen. Very good, very, very good. Thank you.
And it is beneficial to the men and women of the police department to have a range, a 15-lane range right next door. It'll have a shoot house for the SWAT team and tactical teams to train in. Our SWAT team's been very active and aggressive training-wise, but again, they have to go off to other agencies. So we, you know, we just want to be able to offer that to our, the men and women that dedicate themselves to the SWAT teams, tactical teams, as well as patrol division, to be able to have more proficiency with the firearms and the tactics side of it, because, you know, they're the ones that we count on the most.
Excellent. Thank you very much for all your hard work and dedication.
Thank you.
Mr. Taft, you have three minutes.
Right, Taft, Fifth District. I was really coming up here to basically object to it and ask that y'all vote no. But if it's true that the city is not putting any money into it, then that makes me feel a lot better because, as it was discussed at a previous council meeting, we're already at our limit as far as the budget's concerned, and we would be stretching it quite a bit for this amount of money. But the one thing that does concern me is that it was a no-bid contract. Now, I know that the state has specific ways that they want things done, but I still believe that by putting it out for bid is more transparent and it's more, to me, it's more fitting because then you know that you've got the best bid, the best price for what you want to do. That is my biggest concern with it. Now that I've heard that we really don't have any, you know, the state's going to help us pay for this. Because in concept, I do believe it is good to have it here. But again, because of our budget restraints and because we couldn't give the raises that I felt we should have gave, to me would be kind of offsetting to say, well, now we're going to spend this kind of money, because I read 70% when I was reading it. There was a 70% match. So I may have read it wrong. That's very possible. I can't see anyway. But that was what I wanted to express. Thank you.
No, and I'll leave you with the policies in reference to no-bid versus qualified users. And as far as the local, I would never ask for that kind of money for, you know, knowing the budget constraints we have. And I said, there might be a match down the road when you get further into the construction phase. But, you know, we're going to find some dedicated funding for that, too. But I'll give you these. That's where we go by.
I have a question for, I guess, Legal and Ms. Herring as well. If we put this out for a bid, okay, let's just say not only this contract, but any contract, and we don't piggyback from the state or from Jefferson Parish, and we put it out for bid, and those bids are higher than the state or local contracts, would we be still on having to take the bid that we put out for instead of piggybacking off the state of Jefferson Parish? Or do we have, or we can say, no, those bids are too high, and then we're going to reverse back to a Jefferson Parish or a state bid?
I don't think we would piggyback. Are you talking about the construction part of the?
Any contract that we piggyback with Jefferson Parish, let's say for demolition of homes, anything like that, we'd piggyback off Jefferson Parish, Wood Pipe Works, or any other company? Or like the state contracts, I know when Mark wants to buy a lawnmower or something like that, he piggybacks off of the state contracts.
We just get, then we get the same rate that Jefferson Parish got, or whoever we're piggybacking off of.
But I'm saying if we put it out for bid and those bids are higher, can we still say no?
Once we put it out for bid, we got to take the lowest bid.
We got to take the lowest bid, so if we're saying like, for this, not only this contract, but any contract, if we don't piggyback and we do put it out for bid, then we have to take that bid, and then we could be actually paying more?
You're talking about the bid for this contract as far as design?
Not only this contract, but all contracts that we piggyback on, you know?
Yeah, there's different ones that you have to, you have to send out for bid, and there's ones you don't have to. Professional services, you don't have to send out for bid. Construction, yes, you need to send it out for bid. So I'm not, I guess I'm not real sure exactly what you're asking me. On ones, you can't send out something out for bid and then go, oh, I don't like this bid, so let me go see, unless there's something wrong with the bid, because that's the whole point of doing a bid. If you take the lowest bid, you're kind of stuck with what you get, the lowest bid, unless there's something wrong where you find out someone's does shoddy work or there's a problem with the bid. But no, you have, you need to go with the bid. But on some of these design and engineering, you don't send those out for bid.
Right, that's what, I'm kind of, you're doing a crapshoot here that where if you do put it out for bid and the bids, when the bids come back and it's higher, then, well, I could have went ahead, I could have got it from Jefferson Parish, or I could have gotten it in the state, piggyback.
Yeah, if I can just add, even if we would have put an SOQ together for this, SOQ does not consider price. So it's only on qualifications, and then you negotiate the fees with that selected firm after the fact. So even if we would have did a SOQ process, which we could have done for A and E, it still would have not factored price. It's strictly on qualifications. So, the price would have not even been a factor when we were grading these.
Got you.
Councilman Brennan?
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman, I'm just trying to clarify if, what you're asking. If, and just if I'm understanding, if we were going to bid something for some work that needed to be done, and let's say, and somebody help me with this, if we were saying we had $3 million to do this project, is, I think what you're asking is, if we put it out to bid and it came in at $4 million, are we able to say that's more than we wanted to spend? Or we locked in to having to do that project since it went to bid? Or if we don't have the money, we can say, we're not going to move forward with this, correct?
Yeah, if we do not have the money, budgetary restraints are a reason to not move forward. Obviously, we set out, when we bid, we typically say a price that we're thinking, we do it with construction projects all the time, so the A and E firm would give us kind of what they think it would cost to build something like this. We put it out for bid. If it comes in way higher, obviously, we can't move forward because we don't have the money. So there are ways to not go forward with the project, but you are supposed to bid things that you know gives us the same price they're giving Jefferson Parish. Great, but you really should not piggyback a service.
Councilman Branigan?
Thank you.
Okay. Tell me if I'm reading what you said. Okay. If we put it out for bid, okay, and let's say we piggyback Jefferson Parish, it costs $2.5 million. And if we put it out for bid and it comes back at $2 million, can we use that bid? Or are we tied to Jefferson Parish? Is that what you're trying to get at?
All right, it's.
But if you can't, I mean, but this, you can't bid this out according to the state law, so.
No, that's, that's not what.
Is that what you're asking?
No, no, that's not really what I'm asking for. I know previously, maybe six months ago or so, Mark wanted a new lawnmower, and we piggybacked off of the state contract. Okay, well, I kind of went out there and I kind of chopped around. I found a lawnmower that was retail for the same price. Now, whether or not the contractor, the business could have given us a cheaper price, I don't know. But what I just kind of want to say is that if the state comes in, and I'm just going to go for a lawnmower, just for that, and the state contract says, I can get you this lawnmower for $3,000, but we put it out for a bid and instead of taking the state contract, we put it out for bid and the bids come back at $3,500 or $4,000 for that. we put it out for bid and the bids come back at $3,500 or $4,000 for that same lawnmower, can we say, look, those are too high, and refer back to, we're not going to take this, and revert back to the state bid?
If we only had $3,000 to spend initially, yes.
Yeah, okay, that's basically what I'm getting at.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, basically, you should look at, if you're piggybacking, you have the privilege of knowing what that cost is ahead of time.
Correct.
So, you have to make a judgment, do your own research to think, can I beat that? Maybe things changed and there's a deal somewheres, then do your own bid. But if you think that that's a great cost, then piggyback it, and the work's been done, and you can utilize that price.
Got you. Right, I understand.
Okay.
Thank you.
I needed to add, so...
(laughing). Does it, it comes with labor, okay?
Seeing no further discussion, all council members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes six zero. Item 15I is summary ordinance number 13,855, an ordinance ratifying the emergency replacement of pump number one at Holly Heights and Saxony Sewer Lift Station by Precision PSI in the amount of $18,987.65 for the Department of Wastewater. Have a motion by Councilmember Brannigan, seconded by Councilmember Wilmot. Any discussion? Seeing none, all council members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes six zero. Item 15J is summary ordinance number 13,856, an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from Risk Tree Service LLC to provide emergency tree work post-disaster on an as-needed basis in accordance with SEAL bid 25-6894 in an amount not to exceed $300,000 annually for the Public Works Department. Have a motion by Councilmember Sharwood, seconded by Councilmember Wilmot. Seeing no discussion, all council members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes six zero. Item 15K is summary ordinance number 13,857, an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from Risk Tree Service LLC to provide tree work on East Loyola Drive median in accordance with Electronic Bid 25-2164 in the amount of $33,645 for Council District Five. I have a motion by Councilmember Brennan, seconded by Councilmember McKenney. Councilmember Brennan?
Thank you, Madam Clark. Just this and the next one, obviously, it's pretty self-explanatory, but we've been trying to do some improvements in the last year on the medians and just in University City that has been needed for some time. And this is, they've gone and cut down a lot of bad trees and trees that were diseased and threatening to, or at risk of falling and such. So, this is just trying to improve those. We've got Waste Pro on a regular basis that is driving those medians on Thursdays to pick up trash with the boom truck and also with a lot of Walmart and other stores grocery carts. But again, it's just trying to do some improvements on those, on those medians in University City. So, I'd ask for your support, please. Thank you.
You want to grave your trails in a grave mine, we'll go cut down some trees? Okay.
Seeing no further discussion, all council members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes six zero. Item 15L is summary ordinance number 13,858, an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from Risk Tree Service LLC to provide tree work on West Loyola Drive median in accordance with Electronic Bid 25-2165 in the amount of $23,745 for Council District Five. I have a motion by Councilmember Brennan, seconded by Councilmember McKenney. All council members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes six zero. Item 15M is summary ordinance number 13,859, an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from Retief Oil and Fuel LLC to provide unleaded gasoline and diesel fuel for the city of Kenner in accordance with SEAL bid 25-6896 in an amount not to exceed $665,000 annually. I have a motion by Councilmember Brannigan, seconded by Councilmember Sharwood. Councilmember Brannigan?
Ms. Herring, how much have we spent on fuel?
So, this contract is from 2021, so in all the years, we've spent 2.8 million.
How many years?
Uh, four.
Oh, from 2020?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Councilmember Wilmot?
Yes, thank you. And again, Ms. Herring, as far as this year, it's $665,000 annually, not to exceed. What was it last year?
That's the same. 665 is what it is every year.
Okay, thank you, that's all.
Seeing no further discussion, all council members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes six zero. Item 15N is summary ordinance number 13,860, an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from Beacon Air Conditioning, Heating and Refrigeration Incorporated to remove, furnish, and install two air-cooled rooftop units at Exhibition Hall in accordance with SEAL bid 25-6897 in an amount not to exceed $58,498.85 for the General Services Department. I have a motion by Councilmember McKenney, seconded by Councilmember Wilmot. Seeing no further discussion, all council members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes six zero. Item 15O is summary ordinance number 13,861, an ordinance approving a grant awarded from the National Recreation and Park Association in association with Musco Lighting for Infrastructure at Wentwood Skate Park in an amount not to exceed $120,000 for the Kenner Recreation Department. I have a motion by Councilmember Brennan, seconded by Councilmember McKenney. All council members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes six zero. Item 15P is summary ordinance number 13,862, an ordinance ratifying an emergency demolition of the AP Clay Resource Center located at 200 Decatur Street, Kenner, Louisiana by Pipe Works Demolition in the amount of $59,333 for the Community Development Department. I have a motion by Councilmember McKenney, seconded by Councilmember Wilmot. Oh, Councilmember Wilmot?
Yes, I'd just like to find out more about the demolition, as to when it occurs and so forth. Do we have a timeline?
Hello? Hi. The demolition has been done already, but we had several delays due with the livery board, due to the restriction with the livery being real high to river water, but the demolition had to occur, so we just need to pay them. That's why we're bringing it before today.
This is for payment purposes only?
Yes.
Okay, so it's been done. When was it done?
Um...
Roughly?
I think it may some, I can't remember the exact date.
About a month ago?
Yeah.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. They have a lot of restrictions, a lot of delays due to the livery, or river livery.
Real good.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Seeing no further discussion?
Hold on, I'm sorry. Jose, how, what's the square footage on this building? Do you know?
What's what?
The square footage on this building?
What?
Okay, that's fine.
Seeing no further discussion, all council members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes six zero. Item 15Q is summary ordinance number 13,863, an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from Command Construction Industries LLC by the Louisiana Department of Transportation and Development, DOTD, in the amount of $6,325,244.15 for the Roosevelt Boulevard, West Metairie Avenue to West Napoleon Avenue Reconstruction Improvements Project, State Project Number H period 015120, Federal Aid Project Number H 015120 for the Department of Public Works. I have a motion by Councilmember Sharwood, seconded by Councilmember Wilmot.
Just Pam. For some of my constituents that's out there, they're worried about the trees, the things on Roosevelt Boulevard, let's put it all in perspective, the trees are the reason why we are having to repair Roosevelt at a price of $6 million, and I imagine that price will probably go up. There's not much that we can do about it. The median has to be raised. If it becomes raised, then we have to cover up the roots, cover up the tree trunks, which is going to kill the trees anyway. There's no kind of way to get around it. We can look for other alternatives, but we need this project to go forward so we can receive the money from the state and get this project rolling. So, colleagues, I'm asking you, please, go with this, and it's going to be fantastic once we get it done. Thank you.
Councilman Wilmot?
Do we have a status as far as when?
This is a project that has been going on for three and a half years. It's a federal aid project. Being a federal aid project, the DOTD manages that project, the DOTD bids that project, bids received by the state DOTD. Recently, there were 11 bidders. Command Construction was the low bid. Once this contract is approved, is sent to Baton Rouge, and they will give us instructions to issue a notice to proceed with construction. I anticipate that construction on this project will probably start in August. And it's a complete reconstruction of Roosevelt Boulevard between West Metairie and West Napoleon. And to add to the councilman's words on the project, yes, the trees are in all likelihood what caused the problem to have failed over the years. Furthermore, the drain line which serviced that entire neighborhood and other adjacent neighborhoods is under that median right below where the trees are, and we have had problems with that trunk line. This particular project is going to repair some of the damage to that drain line, but that's another reason for the need to remove the trees in a narrow median.
And I'd like to also give kudos to State Representative Joe Stagni. I know he's been up in Baton Rouge, and he fought desperately hard for this project and to make it come to fruition. I know we also probably had other representatives in Baton Rouge who also fought for this. So, thank you all for doing what you all have done. Thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, all council members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes six zero. Item 15R is summary ordinance number 13,864, an ordinance approving a professional services agreement with Digital Engineering and Imaging Incorporated regarding Roosevelt Boulevard, West Metairie Avenue to West Napoleon Avenue Reconstruction Improvements Project, State Project Number H period 015120.6, Federal Aid Project Number H 015120, in an amount not to exceed $705,620 for the Department of Public Works. I have a motion by Councilmember Sharwood, seconded by Councilmember Wilmot. Oh...
I have one question, Jose. If we got any change orders, would that affect this price from Command?
This particular contract, which is digital, is going to be on an hourly basis, construction, engineering, and testing services. If there are change orders that will increase the contract time of the project, of course, Digital Engineering will have to stay out there longer, but we are only paying for services on an hourly basis. So, depending on the type of change order, hopefully, if there are any change orders are not going to be significant and it's not going to impact. This is the maximum amount that we can pay based on federal guidelines and state DOTD guidelines. So, we'll have to wait and see if any change orders that are justified would probably require an increase to this amount. But the beauty about this project is that we're going to need 80% federal money, and we anticipate a 20% match is going to come from state capital allocation, okay? And therefore, the city in all likelihood may not be obligated to spend any local money on this project. And then, I guess, who goes back to representatives of Stagni and others that have helped us secure state capital allocation on this project?
That's where we want to go with that. Thank you, sir.
Seeing no further discussion, all council members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes six zero. Item 15S is summary ordinance number 13,865, an ordinance ratifying the proposal for casualty package insurance for the period of July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2026. I have a motion by Councilmember Brannigan, seconded by Councilmember Lahatt. Is there any discussion? I have a motion by Councilmember Brannigan, seconded by Councilmember Lahatt to amend. We will be revising Section 1 and adding Section 3 to the legislation, which authorizes the mayor to sign the information with the insurance company and then provide it to the clerk after that's signed. Is there any discussion on the amendment? Seeing none, all council members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose, please say nay. Motion passes six zero to amend. Back to your original motion as amended. Seeing no discussion, all council members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes six zero. Item 15T is summary ordinance number 13,866, an ordinance ratifying the proposal for XX Workers Compensation Insurance for the period of July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, which, please note, there was a typographical error. It's June 30th, 2026. I have a motion by Councilmember Brennan, seconded by Councilmember Brannigan. I also have an amendment for this item, which would be on a motion by Councilmember Brennan, seconded by Councilmember Brannigan. In the legislation, we will reflect Safety National Casualty Corporation as the vendor. Any discussion on the amendment? Seeing none, all council members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes six zero. As amended, back to your original motion. Any discussion? Seeing none, all council members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes six zero. Item 16 is ordinances and resolutions in summary for first reading. Item 16A is an ordinance authorizing the utilization of existing state contract number 4400032301 with the Han Company to purchase office furniture and other related items through Louisiana Office Products Incorporated on an as-needed basis not to exceed $100,000 annually for the Department of Finance. Item 16B is an ordinance authorizing the utilization of existing state contract number 4400028713 with Independent Suppliers Group Incorporated to purchase office supplies and other related items through Louisiana Office Products Incorporated on an as-needed basis not to exceed $125,000 annually for the Department of Finance. Item 16C is an ordinance authorizing the purchase agreement with PNC Equipment Finance LLC for One Pierce Custom Saber FR Pumper for the Kenner Fire Department. Item 16D is an ordinance authorizing the purchase of One Pierce Custom Saber FR Pumper from Sidens Martin Emergency Group LLC in accordance with L.A.M.A.S. Contract Number 4400017741 in the amount of $879,819.20 for the Kenner Fire Department. Item 16E is an ordinance accepting the proposal received from Lamarck Ford to furnish two used vehicles in the amount of $46,311 for the Kenner Police Department. Item 16F is an ordinance approving an agreement for capital outlay funding services with Pivotal GR Solutions LLC in an amount not to exceed $70,000 for the legal department. Item 16G is an ordinance approving a professional services agreement with LeBlanc and Tacy Billeo LLC for legal services in an amount not to exceed $300,000 for the city attorney's office. Item 16H is an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from Armstrong Supply Company Incorporated to provide electrical supplies on an as-needed basis in accordance with SEAL bid 25-6900 in an amount not to exceed $300,000 annually for the Public Works Department. Item 16I is an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from Adacap Services LLC to provide emergency cleaning and flushing of subsurface drain lines and drainage structures post-disaster on an as-needed basis in accordance with SEAL bid 25-6898 in an amount not to exceed $200,000 annually for the Public Works Department. Item 16J is an ordinance approving... Sarumi pumps and flange adapters in accordance with Electronic Bid 25-6897 in an amount not to exceed $665,000 annually for the Public Works Department. Serumi pumps and flange adapters in accordance with electronic bid twenty-five dash thirty twenty-one in an amount in the amount of fourteen thousand one hundred and thirty-eight thousand sixteen dollars for the Department of Waste Water. Item sixteen L is an ordinance ratifying an emergency repair of the Fairbanks Morse twenty-inch VTSH pump at the four MGD Sewer Lift Station by Fluid Processing Pumps LLC in the amount of eighty-seven thousand three hundred dollars for the Waste Water Department. Item sixteen M is an ordinance approving amendment number one to the agreement with Prince Dump Truck Services LLC for work relating to clearing and grubbing of land, grading slash spreading of materials, and excavation on an as-needed basis to increase the agreement amount by fifty thousand dollars annually for a new not to exceed total of a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars annually for various city departments. Item sixteen N is an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from Apex Construction Group LLC to remove, furnish, and install gutters at the adult gym located at number two Furman Drive in accordance with electronic bid twenty-five dash twenty-one seventy-four in an amount not to exceed sixteen thousand eight hundred dollars for the General Services Department. Item sixteen O is an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from Apex Construction Group LLC to remove, furnish, and install gutters at the adult gym located at Fleet Management in accordance with electronic bid twenty-five dash twenty-one seventy-five in an amount not to exceed fourteen thousand eight hundred dollars for the General Services Department. Item sixteen P is an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from Ennis Flint Incorporated to supply thermoplastic pavement markings in accordance with sealed bid twenty-five dash sixty-eight ninety-five in an amount not to exceed a hundred thousand dollars annually for the General Services Department. Item sixteen Q is an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from Blackstar Diversified Enterprises to supply traffic signal parts on an as-needed basis in accordance with sealed bid twenty-five dash sixty-nine oh four in an amount not to exceed three hundred thousand dollars annually for the Public Works Department. Item seventeen is reports from the council and our special committees. Councilman Wilmot?
I see we have for first reading, we have sixteen J, which indicates that we have Myers Engineering and so forth regarding the new city hall. If we can, for the next meeting, if we could have updates as to the status of those, that project, and if you will, give us a presentation. Thank you.
Councilman Branigan?
Yes, I just want to let the residents in North Kenner know that if you use West S1Aid, the crepe myrtles that I planted about a year and a half ago have grown some, and especially in front of Capital One Bank and Canes Roulette subdivision. When the residents from Canes Roulette were exited in the subdivision and then looking to the east, the vision was blocked by the trees. So I hired a guy to get these crepe myrtles trimmed, and he started and got the ones that caused the vision problems done day before yesterday or yesterday, and it looks good. But all of those crepe myrtles will be in trimmed. Thank you.
Item eighteen is new business. We have none. Item nineteen is unfinished business and our motions to reconsider are removed from a tabled position. We have none. Item twenty is persons wishing to address the council on special subject matters.
Thank you. Mr. James House, you have the podium, sir.
James House, four five three Bertolino Drive, District Five, twenty-three years. Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, city officials, and fellow residents. On Monday, June sixteenth, I sent an email to the mayor's office, District Five, both at large council members, Kenner City Public Works, and Jefferson Parish Drainage regarding a worsening drainage issue on my street from a nearflooding event on Saturday. On Wednesday, June eighteenth, I sent a follow-up email and additional information from another nearflooding event that day. As of today, I have received no acknowledgement or response from anyone. That silence is unacceptable. A simple reply, even just we're looking into it, would have shown basic courtesy and accountability. So I'm here today to tell you what my expectations are for this situation, and this situation demands attention. It's my expectation within the next two weeks, the drains in my area are inspected, physically inspected. I realize this has been done over the years. I believe Mr. Brennan was in the problem persists. We have problems on Bertolino Drive. I'm asking for more than a routine check and an explanation of our drainage system's capacities and constraints. I'm asking for change in results. Specifically, I'm requesting a detailed inspection of the drainage system in my neighborhood and surrounding streets, a formal action plan to address the reduced drainage capacity with a clear timeline for improvement. I can say with confidence that the drainage in my street, the drainage capacity on my street, has declined at least fifty percent over the last five years. I've watched it, I've measured it, I've photographed it. It's getting worse, exponentially worse, the whole street. This is likely due to increased development, airport expansion, and the lack of long-term upgrades and maintenance. I've watched this situation on Bertolino worsen exponentially over time. My neighbors and I have done our part. We've tried to mitigate the flooding ourselves for years. Most of us are at the point where we're losing the battle consistently. No resident in Kenner should have to worry about their home flooding during a normal summer storm. I appreciate your time today, and more importantly, I look forward to your action.
Thank you, Mr. House.
Mr. House, thank you. Obviously, we did get the emails. I deleted some of my emails because I have a new phone that I'm really not good with. But I did respond to your email and ask you for a phone number so that I could call you so we could discuss it. So I know Jose Gonzalez's department's working on it, but I don't want you to think that your emails were ignored, and I did send you a request asking for a phone number. So I'll give you a part at the end of the meeting, and we could talk about it, but it's not being ignored, and we'll get it, we'll get it looked at and
Again, nobody's, it's about accountability and courtesy, I think. Me and you have talked about this issue before on Bertolino, and I get the capacities of the system, but there needs, there's something wrong in my specific area. And I just want all of you to know that. I want the public to hear it, and somebody needs to step up and action plan and fix the problem. I get the constraints, I get the money, but as the city grows, my issue is getting worse. My neighbors' issues are getting worse. Twenty minutes of rain and I'm backed up in the street, so nobody's backwater can get out with all the investments we've made on our own with subsurface drainage in the back. We're all flooding from the back on Bertolino because the streets cannot get pumped down after twenty minutes of rain. Thank you.
Mr. Gregg.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Mr. Gregg, just stand by for a second. Mr. House.
You don't have to come up, Jim, but I just wanted to make comment on your statements. I do know, I do know you have met you, in fact, we worked it together way back when in the day. I think you're very accurate in your statements that you make, and you were way back when. I think you had a complaint maybe five, six years ago, and we looked into it back then. And then now it's resurfacing again, apparently. This is the first time I've seen it since then that you complained to me. And if you recall, I was very reciprocated and so forth last time. This time, I did internally. I just want to let you know, I apologize for not emailing you back directly, but I did make calls and an email internally to the administration, and I was hoping that they would have an opportunity to respond and get into your issues. I do think there is some flooding issues there, and also it may involve the airport, I don't know. But Jefferson Parish, know this, Jefferson Parish runs those pumps, and that's, that is a thing that we need to get on, and I intend to do something soon to have the airport, at least I want to invite them here, to come and talk to us and tell us more about those pumps. So I believe that's a part of your issue. Just wanted to let you know, and if anybody in the administration wants to chime in, they're more than welcome to. Thank you.
And councilman, the only thing I want to add to that is that I did receive an email from you and Councilman Brennan on the issue early this week, and we are in the process of responding to the concerns. One of the things that we're going to be doing quickly, you know, over the next few days or the next week or so, is to go into that neighborhood, specifically that street, and clean and flush all the drain lines and all the drainage structures. Now, there are a number of improvements that are going to be taking place throughout the city. Some of those improvements may alleviate the problem there, but we're going to start with cleaning and flushing the lines on that particular street, okay, and see if the problem either goes away or is alleviated. But we did have a high-intensity rain event that Saturday that concentrated mostly over Kenner, and we had over three inches of rain in a relatively short period of time that generated street flooding throughout the city. So I need to make sure that everybody understands that. There are some improvements that will take place in, you know, hopefully in the near future, but for starters, we're going to go out there. I have given instructions to our Public Works Department to clean and flush all the drain lines out there, just in case that there is a blockage. If they haven't been cleaned and flushed over the years, there's, in all likelihood, there may be blockages or silt in the drain line, but we are going to clean all those drain lines.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. And I'd like to let Mr. House know that Mr. Gonzalez is checking into your issues, and so your voice was heard, and I apologize again for not sending an email response back to you, but you were definitely heard. Thank you. Thank you for coming today and voicing your concerns as well.
Councilman Branigan?
Yes, Jose. Another solution to that problem is going to be when Jefferson Parish puts that other pump in into the parish line canal, too. So that's on, I just want you to know, that's on the horizon, too. When they built that pumping station there, they had the opportunity to put six pumps in, they put three, and I think they're adding one more there, Jose.
We're adding, I think we're adding two pumps.
Two there. So that, that'll also help that area out and most of North Kenner, too.
My email response to that email, which I received early this week, okay, we were off yesterday, is going to identify some of the improvements that are going to take place, not necessarily in that particular area, but these are improvements that will allow water to run, be pumped elsewhere, and not allow that runoff to go to the Duncan Canal, which is the workhorse for the city of Kenner. One of those improvements is pumped to the river. Yes, it's a distance away, it's being designed, you know, we're going to have two hundred CFS that no longer is going to have to travel the canals and go all the way to the Duncan Canal, okay? That's going to alleviate some of the problems in all the area. Adding a pump or two to the station that you just referred, which is the parish line pump station, is going to increase the capacity, thus, that means less water going into the Duncan Canal Drainage Pump Station. The new pump station at Wood Lake, okay, and Seton Park is also going to allow water to be pumped, you know, to the marshlands, which is also going to prevent that water from going into the Duncan Canal. So you've got three or four projects that are going to alleviate the amount of water that goes into the Duncan Canal, which is the main station that handles all the runoff in North Kenner, okay? Yes, those improvements, is it going to totally solve the problem? No. Is it going to alleviate the problem? I think so. But in addition to cleaning and flushing and all those improvements, we may have to look at that particular street to see if there's anything else we can do if the cleaning and flushing will not do the work.
And the other thing, too, is, you know, having the airport pumps working where that water is not going into our drainage system that we, well, Jefferson Parish's drainage system, to get it out, that causes a lot of flooding, too. I have an issue on Vintage on Chateau where, you know, when you turn off Chateau, it goes down, and we're working on those lines, too, just to see if they're blocked. But when you have that much rain in that short a period of time, I live in, off Joe Yenney in north in Chateau Lakefront, and my street is the back street, and in front of my house, I get a foot and a half of water in front of it because my street drains last, you know, but, and you, when you have that much rain in a short period of time, you're going to have water in the streets. We just have to make sure it doesn't go into your homes, you know? And that's what all of these other things that the administration in the parish is working on will hopefully solve.
You're a hundred percent correct, and it's not just you. You know, the area, the area in front of my house, when we get a high-intensity rain event, it overwhelms the drainage system. I get water to the sidewalk on a high-intensity rain event, but I know the system, I know how it operates, and I know that the pumps are on. In this particular event, I've spoken with parish personnel, all the pumps were on, including the ones at the airport.
Right. And I want you to know that that guy right there, he's the guru, okay? If anybody can fix it, Jose Gonzalez can.
But, but again, just like the mayor said and Councilman Wilmot said, we do not maintain or operate the canals or the drainage pump stations, but they have a good group of individuals in Jefferson Parish that operate and maintain canals and drainage pump stations. And I can assure you, I've been told, and I believe them, that all the pumps were working, including the ones at the airport, during this rain event last Saturday that concentrated primarily over Kenner, and in a short period of time, we had over three inches of rain. It simply overwhelmed the system. Yes, is it going to generate street flooding? Yes, it's going to generate street flooding.
Councilman Kenny? All right. Now, Mr. Gregg, your turn, sir.
Greg Taft, Fifth District. I just got a couple of things I'd like to bring up. Did we by chance change the time that Waste Pro is supposed to pick up garbage? Because Thursday morning at four thirty, I had, I was awakened by the banging of the garbage can, and I was surprised to see them out that early picking up garbage. So I don't know if we changed the time or they took it upon themselves to go out early because I heard in New Orleans they had changed the time. So I don't know, but my cameras on my house captured them coming by at fourth, it was four thirty-six to be exact. That's number one. The other thing, I brought it up when Councilman Branigan brought up about the people throwing trash into the medium. That Waste Pro, and I don't, and it's not just Waste Pro, I don't know if Remali's it because I'm, I don't see them when they do it, except the other day I saw, but I didn't have my phone with me, so I couldn't take a picture because I would have gave it to Code, where when they pick the trash and put it in the truck, it falls on the ground. The guy just looked at it, and then they went on because the truck started moving. Now, I don't know how you look at it, but to me, that is literal. And many people are complaining about the same thing, but the problem is, some of it could be the, the other, the other service because it's like, you know, cups and stuff that end up in the road. So it's where I think most of Waste Pro, I know I put mine in a bag, so I don't know how everybody else does it, but I always feel like if it does fall out, I got a big bag to pick up, and that's it. I don't have to pick up individual pieces. But it is a concern, and it has been brought up by several residences, that they've had the issue when the garbage passes, the trash is left on the road, and they, and they're picking it up themselves, but to be honest with you, as much as we pay for waste pickup, we shouldn't have to do that. And that, that's all I have to say, and I thank you for your attention. Thank you.
Councilman Brennan?
Thank you. Mr. Taft, once, just to clarify something, they, the trash, when they were putting it in the truck, did I understand you correctly, it fell on the ground and then they didn't pick it up? pick it up? Okay. All right. I'll reach out to Jesse. As far as the time, and I believe we've seen this with other vendors and people in the past, I think they're probably starting earlier just because of the heat. And I think we've seen that in the past during the summer months where it's just, so they finish the day earlier, and I think it's just for the safety and stuff of their crews. But I can, I'll check on that as well. I've gotten some calls recently where, it's kind of interesting, where people are, you know, they used to come at nine o'clock, now they're not coming until two, why am my can still in front of the house? There's no, you've got to start at the A Street and end at the Z Streets. There's no rhyme or reason for that. But I'll reach out to Jesse this afternoon, and I'll get an update for you on those.
Mr. Teff, just to let you know, we've had a few conversations with Waste Pro with regard to the early pickups. Typically, when we get into heat advisories, that would be the time within which we'd allow them to start an hour early. I've had several complaints thus far as it relates to early pickup right now, and I've spoken several times with the, our Waste Pro. As it relates to picking up in the neutral grounds, you were indicating that it was a claw truck that picked it up, and that's what left the debris? Or are you indicating that containerized garbage that they were putting into the truck themselves with the garbage can? Which piece of equipment?
The garbage can, when they put it in that hopper, falls on the road, the wind blows it into, or the wind blows it down the street. For example, I'm going to get in trouble just because I already got called down once. But when they leave sometimes, especially now with the wind blowing, I scan maybe an hour a week picking up trash on the road in my yard, or the wind has blown it, probably falling off the truck. That's why I can't stay at its own way.
Right. It might, it might be, again, if people, people need to remember that when you're putting your, placing your garbage out for pickup, that it should be containerized within the garbage can itself to prevent things such as that, not to put things such as paint or other things that are not allowed with your household disposal. So I will speak with Waste Pro as it relates to those types of issues. But you shouldn't be having problems with the 4:30 in the morning. However, once it begins to get hotter and we have heat advisories on a daily basis, we do, we will authorize them to start early. So there will be a little bit more noise, just because in the heat of the day, it's incredibly oppressive for them.
Here we go. Thank you, Mr. Gregg. Mr. Ryan, you have the podium, sir.
Thank you, Councilman. My name is Ryan Nugent, 5444 Erlanger Road in District Three. I had originally come today, I thought the revision to the UDC was going to be on today's agenda. I understand that's going to be in the next agenda, but in general, just want to say I support it wholeheartedly. There are two parts in particular that I'm most aware of. I'm not necessarily sure what the motivation was for every part. But on the new regulations concerning gas stations and the zones in which they're permitted by right, as well as the sign, window sign regulations, there's both things that are definitely needed, and I'm very glad to see them in there. The, one thing I did want to mention, just, Mr. House, you did say something that really struck a chord with me, which is a matter of professional courtesy. When somebody sends you a correspondence, it is very nice to receive just some form of acknowledgement, just to know that they've seen it or that it's even been received. I know a few weeks ago, some of you had the issue with one of my emails going into your spam folders, and so it just definitely, you know, helps to know that somebody has seen it and that, you know, you're not just sitting there left wondering. I also want to acknowledge Ms. Topol, who has been absolutely fantastic. You know, every time that I contact Ms. Topol, not that I always expect a response within 24 hours, but always on top of it, always responds very, very quickly to let me know that she's seen it, and sometimes it's even sooner than 24 hours. So I just want to say how much I really appreciate that kind of thing. I did have a few questions that I wanted to ask about with regards to certain projects that are ongoing. I wanted to know if there was a timeline for the completion of the, I think it's a drainage line project taking place on 42nd Street between Lake Trail and David, to see what the timeline for completion on that is. And then real quick, two minor things related to the new work on Williams Boulevard south of I-10. One was a question that I asked at the last meeting that I didn't really get an answer to, so I'm trying to find out if maybe we can look into this a little bit. But if you're coming southbound on Williams Boulevard, essentially by the time you get to the I-10 overpasses, you need to be in whichever lane you're going to be in. And then it's creating this kind of cluster of cars trying to change lanes. And so there definitely needs to be some kind of signage mounted to those overpasses indicating what lanes are going where. And if we can find out if that's part of the project currently, and if not, if we can get it added to it, that would be great. And so the last thing, real quick, I know I'm almost out of time, but you know how you guys, know how I feel about, you know, throwing money into a pit or a black hole. I'm also a huge proponent of landscaping. I want every component of this, you know, every, every third... But at the same time, I'm very cognizant of our limited resources in terms of maintaining our landscaping installations. And of course, it takes a lot more to maintain a plant bed or something like that than it does, you know, a patch of grass. So with this, the median here on Williams Boulevard just south of I-10, I noticed that they installed a lot of what's called laryope. Laryope is very nice, but the city doesn't really have the resources to maintain that kind of installation. Basically, laryope is something that has to be weeded by hand, and the city doesn't even have enough money to mulch its garden beds, much less do anything other than weed whacker or spray weed killer. So I know I'm way over my time, I'm sorry, but just wanted to point out that I think maybe we could be a little bit more cognizant about what goes into some of these installations, so we're not kind of throwing money into a pit. Thank you, and sorry for going over.
Thank you, Mr. Ryan.
You only get two minutes.
Fair enough.
Anyone else on council? Well, I'd like to say today is my, I'm sorry.
I have an appointment. Is that okay? Can I say my name?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Lahad, I want to personally speak to you afterward. You're the councilman in my area, and I did spoke to you prior, and I did vote for you.
Ma'am, please state your name for the record.
My name is Kathleen Chekay.
You have three minutes.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to deal with you personally after the meeting, some issues that I'd like to discuss with you in regards to a lady contacting you and asking you to please see about putting a stop sign up at the corner of 40th and Colorado. You didn't return her phone call. That's just like emails. It's really rude when you all are working. Dollars are paying for you all. I'm sorry. I don't mean to criticize anyone, but I'm just going to say that I want to ask this one question that I'd like to know. When did taxpayers become responsible for curbs? You know the street, the curb? We are the ones that need to repair that and are fixed. I did speak to code enforcement. I went over to see them, and they want me to reach out to other people. If I go to code enforcement, I want to speak to them, and I want them to handle it and facilitate it wherever it needs to go. I don't want to be running around a little circle. I don't really, I'm not involved in that. What I'm concerned about is the area in which I live. And I'd like to know, when did this come into effect that the homeowner is responsible for curbs that are all beat up? Green lawn has now been touched lately, that they're coming and they're cleaning out the drains where I make sure everything is very clean in front of my house. But there are just a lot of issues that I have questions about, and I'd like to know who can answer that for me. Tell me what direction should I go in? I have some pictures here also that I made, because a long time ago, I had an issue with grass. Situation where I was vacant from my home for a while. It was not on intent. But right here, you can see that there is one of these little, whatever you call it, measure for the street. That's in the area. This is like four feet tall. This is a liability here. I don't know who owns the property, but someone should be liable for that. There is grass that is up to my waist in this area. There's a man that went and cut the grass. There are sidewalks that obviously that we are, that have not been touched. When Jeannie Black was in the area, she handled business, and business should be handled according to the council. Also, let me mention real quick, a lady across the street from this house, this deplorable area here, they went immediately and put a ticket because someone parked in that driveway. They totally ignored the grass. That wasn't an issue. They were worried about someone parked in the driveway. Very interesting, isn't it, when you say? This is one of the curbs here that the people can't get fixed in front of their house because they're responsible for that. They're liable. So that's all I need to say. My time is up, but I've got pictures for you. And I thank you.
Kathy, yeah, definitely want to meet what you're after. So you touched on a whole lot of things just now. First thing-
I'm going to talk about green lawn because that's where I live.
No, that's perfectly fine. One of the big things that, and this has caused a lot of confusion, back when Jeannie Black was the councilwoman, there was this program where the city could actually redo your sidewalk, and this, it was either we, you could pay for the materials and the city would cover the labor. In 2008, there was an ethics opinion from the Attorney General that came out and said the city could no longer do that because it was private type property. So we cannot authorize public funds to redo sidewalks unless there's some type of issue with like a drain that the city causes. So I get calls all the time, and I've heard that 10 times, well, they did my sidewalk in 98 or 2002, and I'm no longer allowed to do that. We can't do that up here because it's a violation of state law. Curb issues, you know, the city's responsible for curbs. I've actually done a bunch of curb projects lately. In the last four months, I'm getting ready to authorize another 15 of them. The drains are the city have actually, we've actually redone several drains since I've been in office. Your particular drain, yeah, let me look at the pictures and see where you are.
It's not my drain. It's the neighborhood. I have to walk the neighborhood. I live in that area. And the only reason why I need to walk it, I would love to just close my eyes and walk on personally, but I have to walk it because I rescued a dog, and he's a big dog, and I have to walk through there. And I've also fallen on the sidewalk, went to the hospital-
Oh, wow, okay.
-where my nose was like broke. I mean, it wasn't broke because I went through everything, but still, you know, it's an issue. I'm not the only person that has fallen. There's got to be some kind of program. You get all this funding for cutting down trees and all of this. And you know what? I'm sorry, but I am totally against all of that because the streets are not. That is not the truth. You know, the streets are not damaged from the trees. The trees are for the birds and everything else, and for the air.
Yeah.
You know, I think that we're spending a lot of needless money that we've gone out for, that we're looking for.
Yeah. And grass is another issue with-
Seven hundred and some thousand dollars for this? Why don't we do something for the neighborhood? You know, I mean, I did get you a little pamphlet about the bridge down there. That's a beautiful bridge, you know. But I need to live in an area to where it's all trashed out, and I'm very particular about taking care of things.
Well, yeah. And the grass issues, if it's on private property, the code enforcement, we go after that. I've personally been involved reporting these issues when there's private property involved. The city can't just automatically do it without posting it, warning the person, and doing a couple. Look, we could, there's a lot of stuff you just brought up. Let's talk after. There's a couple of people here who could probably answer a lot of your questions, okay? Thanks for coming.
Just Pam, can you go ahead and state your name for me, please?
Lisa House, 2220 Main. I have a couple comments.
Ms. Lisa?
Yes. First of all, thank you, Kenner Police Department, the Supporting ICE, because we do have a big problem. Second, I was shocked to know that my councilman knows the guy on the corner of Williams and Veterans, Mr. Eugene. Y'all need to get rid of him. He's a distraction. It's not funny. He's a distraction. He walks, people give him money, it stops the traffic in the turn lane. Now, my question to you, what's going on with the $5,600 study at the corner of Roosevelt and West Napoleon that you were supposed to get back to me about?
I tried to reach out to you, and, no, no, no. Thank you, Councilwoman. I tried to reach out to you a while back to tell you that I did receive the study, and I wanted to get with you and see if we could get together and talk about it. But the study came back, and Carmella came back and said that for traffic-wise, that it meets all the specifications from the state, that the U-turn put in front of Jefferson Parish, that is okay. The traffic on Main was not out the ordinary.
The study lasted two weeks. You told me it was going to be a month.
I, yes, ma'am. And I got it, I have it. I'd be more than glad to share it with you. Just give me a second here. Trying to think, because it should be on my phone here when I tried to talk, call you. But I did try to reach out to you.
I emailed you, too. So I emailed you, too. So contact me that way also.
That's not on my phone. But I did try to reach out to you, and I'm more than glad to talk to you anytime to reach out. But I do have the traffic study, and I'd be more than glad to go over with you.
I have the same phone number and email. And back to Mr. Eugene, it's a big problem with people giving him money. He's walking across the street with his two 16-ounce cans of beer. So that's what y'all support.
Oh, yes, ma'am. I know Mr. Eugene, and PD is aware of him as well. But there's not much, a lot that we can do about getting him off of the streets. Any other councilmen and women who like to speak? Today is my last meeting as council president. I'd like to thank my colleagues and the administration for putting up with me and giving me everything I needed to do my job. And next council meeting in July will be, the gentleman right here to my right, Councilman Wilmont, will be our new council president, and kind of inform you, sorry, but I'm not going to be here next meeting. So, but everyone, thank you so much. Thank you. And it's been eye-opening, and it's been an experience for me. Thank you all. Motion to adjourn?